This conference will now be recorded.
Mr. Davila.
Hey, Tim.
Hi.
You guys standing out tomorrow?
Yep.
Hi Frank.
Hi, Aaron.
Hi, Aaron.
Hi, Aaron.
Hi.
Aaron, have you talked to Josh since four?
Uh, not since four.
Okay.
Had some emails, but about other stuff.
He's good with getting two or 300 grand from the deal for parks.
Oh.
That'll play out in exec, I assume.
Yes.
Thanks. There's the man. Hi, Josh. You're muted.
That's right. I got money in the bank and gas in the tank.
I've gone for a week and you're like full on... Both of y'all, you and Josh.
Who, me?
Yeah.
I haven't changed. Still just...
It's not Movember. But you've got Full Man Chew going.
Yeah, I always have that.
Josh, you're muted. We can't hear you.
He doesn't want us to hear him yet.
No one cares. Sounds like Chris Farley.
Hey, Josh. If we're gonna have exec, do we want to have Bart? Um, that he could be part of that conversation? Because there may be a question or two that need to be specifically for him.
Um, I will send it to him now.
Okay. Paul, is that your office?
Yes, ma'am. I'm always looking for help, so. I don't have any pretty paintings though, like you do, unfortunately. I've got a few here from my kiddos that they put on my wall.
Oh.
I see that.
That's the valuable ones.
Yeah.
That's what her son painted behind her. It's the same difference.
Oh, that's cool.
I just want to make sure we're going to executive session first, great?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Arch, Frank, Tim, David. Don. Dick. We have somebody called... Oh, there it is. All right, I got five o'clock.
John Snyder. Is that John Snyder?
Yes, sir.
Hey, John.
All right, stand by. We don't see Dick or Don yet, correct?
No, sir.
All right, we're starting. All right. Notice that hereby given that the Lago Vista City Council is holding a special call meeting on Tuesday, July 7th, 2020 at 5:00 PM as prescribed by VTCA Government Code Section 551.041 to consider the following agenda items. Senator, please note, we have everybody in attendance minus Don Arthlow and let me see, yes, Dick Weatherly. Uh, we will convene executive session. Number one, we'll convene into a closed executive session pursuant to sections 551.071 Advice of Counsel, 551.072 Real Property, 551.074 Personnel, Section 551.087 Economic Development, Texas Government Code in Section 1.05 Texas Disciplinary Rules of Professional Conduct Regarding A Consultation with Legal Counsel Regarding a Request to Purchase Real Property Located at 8113 Foothill Cove From the City. And we convene at 5:01 PM. And those of y'all in the general session, we will be right back.
Okay, Mayor, I'm gonna close this one and then I'll go open the next one.
Is this the exec one? I don't know that this is the executive one.
This is John Snyder. I'm in the general meeting, so I don't think this is the executive.
Don't either. All right.
John Tripp's here if there are any questions on the underwriting.
Guys, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I am trying to get into the exec and it's kicking me back to go to meeting. But I can hear you.
Yes, sir. We're logged into the general session. We're not part of the executive session. So we were only provided with one call in.
Hey Frank, this is Dave. You need to sign out of this session.
I did. Okay.
You never left. I've seen you all the time. You too, Arch. And Don as well, you need to sign out and go to the other one that Josh sent you. You too, Dick.
So I can't get to the executive somehow.
No, you need to find the email that Josh sent you with the meeting and click on that one. But you need to sign out of this one first.
Josh sent... Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, everyone, I'd like to now commence the citizen meeting. Just kidding. Hey, Darcy, they are in executive session right now. And your microphone is off.
Okay, if they're late, then I'll come back in in a minute because I'm still finishing up something.
See you in a little while.
David, Dick, Frank, Tom.
Was Arch over here?
I do not see him.
No, not yet. He just text back.
Missing two, Arch and Tim. There's Arch. We just need Ken.
Tim was going to reclusive himself, but does he?
Yeah, I think. Yeah, I think.
We can probably move forward. Robin, I have an update for you. The two members that I mentioned earlier, Don Barcelo and Dick Weatherly. They were present. They were just in the wrong go-to meeting at the, at the beginning. So all council members were present at the beginning of the meeting. All right. I don't know if Tim's gonna meet us or not. So action items, we reconvene from executive session and open session at 5:38 PM to act as deemed appropriate in city council's discretion regarding a consultation with legal counsel regarding a request to purchase real property located at 8113 Foothill Cove from the city.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I make a motion that the city proceed. City staff proceed with taking bids for this property with the guidelines that were given to the city manager and executive session. Second.
Who was the second?
Dave Williams.
All right, I have the motion by Dick Weatherly and the second by Dave Williams. Any further questions?
I missed, is this on the property?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. All right. So all those in favor say aye. Raise your hand. All those opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries unanimous. All right. Now we'll go into citizen comments. In accordance with the Open Meetings Act, councils prohibited from acting or discussing other than factual responses to specific questions, any items not on the agenda. I do not have anybody that signed up to speak. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to make a quick comment? All right, we will move on to the next one. Action item number three, discussion, consideration and possible action regarding resolution number 201849, resolution approving the form and authorizing the distribution of a preliminary limited offering memorandum for the city of Lago Vista, Texas, special assessment revenue refunding bonds taxable series 2020A to Sarah on Lake Travis Public Improvement District Major Improvement Area Project and city of Lago Vista, Texas, special assessment revenue and refunding bonds tax exempt series 2020B to Sarah on Lake Travis Public Improvement District Major Improvement Area Project. And I'm going to open up discussion, action item number four, discussion, consideration and possible action regarding resolution number 20-1849, resolution of the city council of the city of Lago Vista, Texas, related to the Tassera on Lake Travis Public Improvement District calling a public hearing to consider the levy of special assessments against property in the major improvement area to pay certain costs directing the city secretary to publish mail and post notice of the public hearing as required by law, providing an effective date and resolving other matters incident and related thereto. And with those, I will turn this over. Has Aaron as the lead and we have Bart and Tom and Darlene. And who else do we have? Don and
John Snyder.
John Snyder.
So Bart's our bond counsel. I think, thank you for opening up these, both of these items together. I think tonight we're going to have more of a discussion of, you know, some issues and that we've come across in the last couple of weeks. So I'm going to let Bart lay it out and then where are other parts of the team have input they can add in.
Thanks, Erin. And Mayor Council, again for the record, my name is Bart Fowler with McCall Park, Kirsten Horton. It's my pleasure to serve you. I was bond counsel. We've been working on this pit transaction for quite some time. Most of it is a fairly straightforward refunding, refinancing that you're aware of, of the improvement area. Number one, pit bonds that are outstanding. Those are going to be refinanced, refunded for savings. Your financial advisor, Tom Lawrence, is here. He can explain that a little bit more if you have questions for him. The other is regarding the major improvement area. That's the undeveloped land out there. It's also refunding, refinancing all the outstanding debt on that property, that portion of the pit as well as including a new money component to reimburse the developer for eligible costs. The eligible costs that were anticipated, as you know, are some right of way associated with the main road that's out there. We've come across a couple of things just yesterday that caused, raised a couple of questions we're sorting through that are going to cause about a week delay to sort through. So we'll be bringing up the resolutions. The, the resolution regarding publication still needs to be considered tonight, but for discussion purposes, item three is the one we need to talk to kind of explain where we are, what's going on and what, what happens. The issues have to do with the way with the financing agreement. We're trying to harmonize those to confirm that the right of way is an appropriate expenditure for the assessment revenues to actually lucky assessment for to reimburse and pay the developer for the essentially acquisition of that right of way is what it would be. Since right of way has been dedicated to the city back in 2012, the agreements looking at are from 2012. Or need to confirm that the obligation and commitment of the city to reimburse those costs was effective in 2012.
Bart, hey, I'm sorry to pause you. Is it possible for anybody who's not speaking to mute it? It's, your voice is carrying through.
There you go. I fixed it.
Is that better? Let's see. I think I saw that Mayor and Mr. Robbins both had questions. That may have been the same one as Aaron just raised. Okay. Let's see, I think I saw that mayor and Mr. Robbins both had questions. That may have been the same one as Aaron just raised. Okay. So, so we're sorting through that after what was right brought to our attention yesterday, we, we do need to take some time to look at that to confirm that we can include the right of way as a eligible cost. There are a couple of options we can consider and your meeting on the sixteenth, we'll come back with some firm answers about what we can do. The first one would be to just drop the new money portion altogether and just move forward with the refunding refinancing pieces of your outstanding debt. That's the easy answer. But the alter, well, there may be, maybe three things. The second would be to swap out the right of way for another eligible cost. There are additional expenses that the developer has incurred. We may be able to swap those out to keep the structure the same. And then obviously the third one would be if we continue going through the agreements from two thousand and twelve. We may be able to get comfortable with a new analysis that we could still recover the same right of way expenditures that we're, we're currently planning on, on doing. Regardless, we need to take some time to do that. So we need to ask you not to consider approving distribution of the offering memorandum tonight. We do need to get to go ahead and authorize publication of the notice in the hearing that's going to be called for the sixteenth. Understand that may be delayed. We need to go and get that one done tonight. But as far as offering memorandum goes, we are happy to answer questions, have a discussion on where we are, what we're planning to do. As I mentioned, your financial advisors here, Mr. Tom Lawrence, as well as your pit advisor, pit consultant, John Snyder. We also have your underwriter, Tripp Davenport on the line as well as Darlene from Heinz to talk about the development itself if you have questions. That kind of hits the high points. I don't want to gloss over anything. I want to take the time that you got, y'all need to talk about it. But with having said that, I think I'll just stop, see if you have questions or if there's anything else that anyone else working on this that's on the in the meeting right now would like to say, I'll just turn this over to, to y'all.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Dick.
You know, so Bart, what you're saying is that the resolution eighteen forty eight. Which has the, that has the seven hundred thousand dollars in it. We just want to wait on that one.
Correct.
You need approval on the twenty dash eighteen forty nine tonight.
The, the one is that that's the one for the hearing and the publication of a notice? That's the one? Yes, that needs consideration tonight.
All right.
Tom or John or Darlene, I don't know if there's anything else y'all, y'all would like to add. Mr. Robbins.
Oh, yeah, I, I I've actually since you've been on, we're in executive session, I've been updating the numbers. I have two sets of numbers now, one with the the ROW purchase and one without where it's just pure refunding on the MIA bonds. So, you know, on that front. It's relatively straightforward from the numbers standpoint, obviously. Documentation wise, it's a little more involved, I think, with the disclosure documents and the indenture and the and, and the SAP that John Snyder is working on. It'll, it'll, it'll take some time to, you know, the next few days. If that's the route we go, if we do refunding only, but we're ready to go forward. I did have some numbers included in your packet for tonight. Which assume we were going to be going forward with approval of the disclosure documents. The numbers are pretty up to date, except it does include the right of way purchase and one thing I didn't mention last time we met back in June. Is, you know, we, there's a significant annual savings and debt service on the MIA. Because we're lowering the interest rate and we're stretching that service out. So by stretching it out, of course, you'll be paying more dollars over time. But what I failed to mention in there is the, the present value figure. Because you're paying dollars in the future years that are much cheaper than the dollars today due to inflation. And so, and, and looking at the numbers I just ran without the, the purchase. The negative is two hundred thousand, it's basically two hundred thousand today's dollars to redo the debt service. And it lowers the annual assessments by one point. Let me see what it is here. Without the ROW, it's, it's between one point six and one point seven million. Now, if we switch over to the IA refunding. Which is a much smaller transaction. I think you'll find it interesting that this much smaller transaction has present value savings of over a half a million. So if you combine both of the financings together, you're actually, actually based on today's interest rates, you, you would actually achieve over three hundred thousand dollars of present value savings. I just wanted to point out the present value figures based on today's dollars. That's pretty much it. Yes, Frank? Or am I allowed the one to tell you? You can go ahead and ask the question.
Yes, go ahead.
I'm trying to figure out what we're doing. The resolution talks about approving a form. Which is a long document which is attached. Bart, you're suggesting we not vote on that with respect to eighteen forty nine tonight, correct?
Yeah, I need to, I don't have the agenda in front of me. Need to confirm the, the numbers, but if that's the one that's approving the form of the offer memorandum. Yes, we're suggesting not take action on that tonight. Because that form includes the new money and that would be a material change that I'd rather have council approve. If it's going to be in there or not. And since we don't know right now.
Is fourteen oh eight okay?
Let me, fourteen oh eight, that's, that's the resolution.
Oh, wait, I know, I know we're well, I just got it. Mayor, give me, give me a break. Is fourteen? Forty eight, okay. So, Mayor.
I think, okay, fourteen, eighteen forty nine. Yes, eighteen forty nine is the one regarding the the hearing and notice that needs to be given. Forty eight is the one that we need to delay action on.
Forty eight?
That's correct. Yeah, Mayor, forty eight is the one that is the offering the memorandum and that's the one we do not want to take action as Bart said. And I think Frank said it correctly that forty nine is setting the public hearing for the other, and that's the one we can, we can take action on.
Let me, let me read, pardon me, guys, I'm sorry. The agenda reads consideration, the one we're on. Number four, discussing Sarah Pataj guarding twenty eighteen forty nine, rest of city council related to Sarah Lake Travis improvement district calling for a public hearing. To consider level of special assessments property in the major improvement area. Isn't that the one with the seven, eight hundred thousand dollar issue?
Correct. And the reason that one, we have to authorize this notice and, and hold the hearing to preserve the option to do that in the future. We have to get the notice published, I believe in the paper this week, which we're already ready to do. To be able to, to meet the statute requirement for getting the notice done ahead of the, of meeting. So it, it, it is a notice and a hearing that may not occur if for some reason the, the new money piece comes out of the major improvement area bond. But to be able to preserve that ability, we have to get that published and conduct that hearing scheduled, get the hearing scheduled. Understanding that it could get pulled down if, if we can't get things worked out.
All right. My understanding, Aaron, give me a hand here. Is that we were also approving, the buzzword was the form. Of the long document that's in our backup. The long document. Document. Is the one with the problem in it. And I, and so I I think, I guess we're doing two things with the resolution. We're calling for the public hearing and approving the document, correct?
And no, no, sir, that's not correct. Item three, which is resolution eighteen forty eight is would be, be approving the long document. And that's the one that I'm suggesting you don't take action on tonight. Eighteen forty nine is the one that would authorize publication of the notice and schedule the hearing to occur in the future.
Mayor, would it be okay for me to address the issue of substances associated with the major improvement area at this point?
Sure.
I think we have an opportunity in the major improvement area bonding. To have to probable, we're probably going to have to either amend the development agreement if that's appropriate. But if it's appropriate, I'm submitting the development agreement. I'm suggesting that we get some feedback. I'm getting I'm suggesting that we look at the provision and development agreement that has to do with comparing sub division regulations. There goes the backup.
Feedback is coming from your microphone. Can you turn it off there? You go. Now, Todd, Frank.
Thanks, Dick. The development agreement who negotiated twenty twelve has substantial variance to our subdivision regulations respect to parkland. And paying fees in lieu of because we were getting a public pool into Sarah. The negotiation was they wouldn't have to pay. What I recall is a six digit figure in fees in lieu of dedicating parkland. There have been issues that the city has been trying to work with Heinz, et cetera, in the POA over the years about that pool. I'm suggesting that if we have the opportunity to renegotiate the, the development agreement that we include in those negotiations. The discussion of the pool, give the POA the pool. And have the DA amended. To have them pay what our subdivision regulations require a fee in lieu of, and that's a six digit number. My recollection is between two hundred and five hundred grand, which is also reimbursable. In a pit. And that money be used for the park being built next door to Sarah. So I'm okay with the right of way. Bonding if it's legal. But I would hope we could renegotiate, get some money for our parkland next order to Sarah. Thank you.
Yeah, good idea. Thank you. All right, Darlene.
Yes, I'd just like to comment on, on that retroactively charging a fee. As we've been working with prior city managers as well as Josh Ray. You know, for our public hours every summer. We've been, you know, making strides and paying thousands of dollars every summer for public hours at the pool. So we've, we've essentially already been, you know, abiding by the, the park and pool operating agreement that was negotiated in, I think, twenty fourteen or fifteen or so. You know, to operate that under the, the guidelines that the city and, and Heinz negotiated in the past.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Frank.
Darlene, I appreciate the point you're making. And I'm, I'm not trying to negotiate. And let me make it clear, you, you, you wanted this with me. Y'all, y'all are the best subdivision we got town, probably the best developer in the world out here. I think we have a win win opportunity. Josh and I have talked about it. Why not? Let me just try to suggest something and, and somebody else is going to work it out beside the two of us, probably. You get the pool back. It's a POA pool, period, in a message. What I'm think we can do, maybe. Is in lieu of, given the terms that I was involved in in great detail in twenty twelve with. That we, you get the pool, the POA, to Sarah, the POA gets the pool. And we get a special benefit by adding a reimbursable two or three hundred grand, whatever the number is. And I don't, I don't have the numbers in front of me. I recall what the numbers are, but those, the numbers can come out. When y'all visit later, not, not, not with the council, but this queen of staff. That, that you get the pool and we get two or three hundred grand for the park next door. That's all. Your, your point is that, and my understanding is that we have, the way the pool works now, it's three hours. But somebody has to, to get in the pool, they have to register with somebody at the city hall before they can get in the pool, correct?
No, they just have to have a city pool pass.
Say again?
They need to have a city pool pass that's issued by the city, the pool pass for summer.
Yeah, and so they get that at one time, correct?
That's correct.
And then there's three hours that are available for folks to get in the pool, correct?
Right, Monday to Friday.
Okay, Josh, there are some numbers and I want to quit right there. Thanks.
Yeah, we can discuss, we can discuss that. You know, at the next meeting.
Mayor, this is, this is John Snyder. I just, and, and this is probably a question for Bart, but there, there may be an issue that the pool was paid for with bond proceeds from the twenty twelve bonds and I'm not sure what the rules are around. If the city was transferring improvements that were paid for with the bond proceeds, but that's, that's one thing we'd have to consider.
No, you're right. That is an issue. We, we just mentioned this earlier today. So there's things like that to look into, but no, no, that's, that's certainly a good point.
Hi, John. All right. Anybody else have questions, comments?
Mr. Mr. Mayor, it seems like there's a lot that people are going to be working on between now and our next meeting to try to make all this work. Effectively and efficiently. But it seems like what we need to do today is just approve the public hearing and the publication of the public hearing so that we can move forward for our next meeting. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Can I make a motion that we do that? On, and to, to approve the eighteen forty nine public hearing so that they can publish it and then all the parties that need to be can sit down in a room and work out all the details.
Yeah, can you hold on just a little bit? Cause I'd need to see if there's anybody in the audience that has any questions or comments before we take any action.
You got it.
All right, anybody in the audience? I see Paul shaking his head. All right, now we can take action.
Do I need to say that again?
If you don't mind.
I make a motion that we approve eighteen forty nine, which is the announcement of the public hearing for publication so that all the details before we can be worked out.
I'll circle. All right, I have the motion from Dave Williams and the second from Dick Weatherly. Any further discussion?
Yeah, does that include the, the refunding?
No, this is just setting the public hearing.
Aaron, what's my stance on this then?
Aaron, you're muted.
There we go. Approving the public hearing is fine. Council member Collins. Cause you're not approving any dollars that would affect you. The funding.
Thank you.
All right, any further questions, comments?
The actual resolution is number twenty eighteen dash eighteen forty nine, just to be
All right, thank you. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, nay. Hearing none, motion, the resolution carries unanimously. All right, that is all we have on the agenda for tonight. So we have nine days to everything, to find all the documents, get everything clarified and back to council on the 16th. So, yes, Frank.
I'll be calling New Mexico.
Does that mean item three is pulled, Mayor?
Yes. I'm sorry, say that again?
Item three is pulled?
Oh, yes, item number three has been pulled by the request of the applicant. Anybody else? All right, I will call this meeting adjourned at 6:06 PM. Good night.
Bye.